Good to have you all this morning. You know, some of the schools are closed and a couple of them have some delays, so we'll see how they may do. But we're here, so I'm glad to see you all. We're fortunate to get to have a visit here with Soil and Water and to learn a little bit more about what's going on there. I'm reminded as you folks are going to present today that after 12 years, sometimes you learn something, then you forget, then you get reminded. I'm looking forward to hearing it probably again. There's some things that probably come to me that I wasn't thinking of or maybe even aware of in the first place, I'm not sure. But we welcome you all and give you support.
You want me to approach the podium or are we good here? Yes?
Just for the sound, people online, thank you.
Well, good morning. For those of you, I know most people in the room, but my name is Tommy Springer. I'm the Wildlife Specialist over at the Soil and Water Office. A little bit about my position, more so than me. It's kind of a joint partnership with the Ohio Division of Wildlife. It was started here in Fairfield County in 1998 is when the Division of Wildlife kind of kicked off this program. Put a local contact in select counties around Ohio. Right now, there's only 20 counties that have a wildlife specialist. The district receives a grant from the Division of Wildlife to kind of offset my salary a little bit. And basically, I serve as a non-law enforcement liaison from the Division of Wildlife. So I help our residents with anything non-law enforcement. And here in a minute, I'm going to introduce our new Wildlife Officer Jade, who handles the law enforcement aspect of things. But it's also a partnership with the private land side of Division of Wildlife, as well as our local Wildlife Officer, and kind of serves that initial point of contact for local folks. You know, our hours are pretty set. They know that from 8:00 to 4:00 on Monday through Friday, I can be reached. Wildlife officers tend to work a little bit more hectic schedules. Sometimes overnight shifts, sometimes long shifts. Sometimes they're pulled out of the county. So it was a nice agreement to come to back in 98. We were again one of the first counties, I think there were 12 initially, that had the wildlife specialist. And we recently received last year the 25-year award. We've had a wildlife specialist in Fairfield County for 25 consecutive years as part of that program. So Jade, I'll have you come up here. Many of you have probably ran into Tony Zirkle. He was our Wildlife Officer starting in 2009 when he was assigned to Fairfield County. And he worked here up through the middle part of last year. And then he got a promotion with the division, was promoted to Wildlife Officer Supervisor for District One, which is the central Ohio district. And Jade was kind of selected as his replacement. And she started here in July of last year and has been on board ever since. But many of you probably had a cross paths and some of you, that's probably a good thing. That you have a cross path with the Wildlife Officer. But I know communicating with Jade and trying to get things going between training and different things. She's been all over and hasn't had a lot of time to interact with the folks and especially meet you guys. We wanted to bring her here today. And I'm going to kind of put her on the spot, have her come up here and open the floor to any, anything. I'll let her introduce herself, give a little bit of background about her. But then open the floor to any questions you guys have for Jade or myself.
Always interesting with the mics because you can hear yourself talking like a distraction. But I came on in 2020, so that was interesting going through that academy. Was helping out at large. I mean, I didn't have a county initially, living up in Delaware County. And then after about a year, was down in Washington County as far southeast in Ohio as you could go. But when Tony got promoted, it was kind of nice for him to come back to central Ohio because those guys kind of raised me in the agency. But you know, our Soil and Water folks helped us out a lot. They cut down a lot of work for us doing deer damage permits. There are a lot of people that if they don't necessarily know how to contact me, it seems like they'll contact the Soil and Water folks and you pass the information along to me or vice versa. So this is a wonderful relationship for us to have and it helps me out a lot. Like he had said, Tony was here for 12 or 14 years and it seemed like he knew every person and every road. He's gotten promoted to supervisor, so I still get to pick his brain. And he's been a wonderful resource and somebody that I highly respect. So getting used to everything in Fairfield County. We had a lot of trainings that we were catching up on. Some stuff that had been postponed due to COVID. So we did like Officer Water survival training. And we have a Trapper Academy, a waterfowl school. That was several weeks of training all combined together that we finally got to do this past fall that we'd been waiting two years to do for. So finally kind of caught up on everything and I'm getting to invest the time and the count of the way that I want. But so it's good to meet some faces. But do you guys have any questions for me or Tommy at this point or anything?
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to thank you all for being with us today. You mentioned something there in your remarks and I think I know what this is, but I'd like to hear your explanation. You use the phrase deer damage permits. Can you explain what a deer damage permit is?
I think it might be labeled as a nuisance. I don't deal with those a whole lot because I'm down in Lucky, Washington County and here to have Tommy discuss this. But basically outside of the hunting season, you have often times farmers are dealing with their vegetation getting eaten by a deer or some other animal. They're trying to determine if it's from deer or from raccoons, you know, what animal's causing harm. And then they'll put in that request for that permit. And in this case, like I said, we have Tommy to help to go out there basically verify, yes, we think this is deer damage. It is causing an economic impact on your crop here. And then they work out the details for basically where they can take that deer out of deer season to help minimize the deer population and the damage that they cause on that property.
So it's like permission to shoot the deer?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So keep me informed. What area do you cover today?
So the way it works for us, and every state does it differently, but in Ohio, we're kind of old school. We have one person assigned per county. So Fairfield County is my baby. I am the Fairfield County Officer. They break the state down into units, like work districts and work units. So I have guys that I'll work with more often. The guys in my adjacent counties like Pickaway or Licking County are on that day. I'll pick up calls and cover. So we work together very well across those lines, but my main center focus is Fairfield County.
And so what's your, I mean, what's a day in the life like? What do you primarily, what do you do?
It's a little all over the place. September through really muzzleloader season and the beginning of January is the busiest time. In August and come, I think like April, May, we're doing a lot of events, going to schools, talking about, you know, good interactions with wildlife, how to handle wildlife, who we are as a resource, going to state fair, going to county fair. There are several programs that I try to participate in that focuses on getting women in the outdoors. So I'll go and teach archery basics or shotgun basics. So a lot of education is involved in that. During the hunting season, obviously, we're focusing more on hunters, fishers and trappers, looking at law compliance and making sure they have the correct licensing and permits to hunt and harvest those animals in the state of Ohio. We also do a lot of permit work. So if somebody gets a red fox and somebody has raised, taken out of the wild, they raised it, sold it, somebody has it as a pet, there's a permit process that they have to go through that we've done verify. So basically, any native wildlife in Ohio, whether that's being used, we have that legal authority to enforce. Especially come the spring though, we will also do a lot of enforcing when it comes to litter or pollutions. I don't think there's anything else because it's just, it kind of varies, which is nice. You get tired of one thing in the fall, it kind of cycles through your feeling with something different in spring. So it makes it interesting.
True.
Mr. LaVacy?
One of my favorite wildlife is Canada geese. So you know, it's pretty interesting as you mentioned about being nuisance for the deer. Same thing applies for geese. And you can actually get a permit through O D N R. Because you know, there's two different types of Canada geese. There's the migrating and the non-migrating. And we have a lot of non-migrating. And those are problematic because so are you seeing a decline in population, hopefully?
No.
Not really. Although on the car ride over here, Dave, you'll be happy to hear this. Jade said she's received some phone calls about folks up around Buckeye Lake chasing the geese away with laser pointers. So other residents of Buckeye Lake are doing their diligence to keep those geese away.
So when the catching season starts, you know, we do egg gathering with O D N R.
So it is possible to put in for a permit where there's different things they can do. It could be euthanasia of the adults, it could be egg adling, it could be gathering up and relocating. So there's a couple of different options depending on what that individual works out with our biologists. They kind of make the plan, specialize the situation. Actually, a resource guide too on our website that talks about different recommendations for basically goose harassment to kind of keep them out of an area and to even prevent them from laying their eggs in a particular area. And it kind of breaks it down month by month. And actually, like laser pointers are one of those things people recommend and spooks them to kind of keep them away. And there are companies that have, you know, border collies, they'll kind of spook the dogs as well. So there's different methods. But if you're looking for euthanasia methods, like permit methods that are outside of hunting, that's where the permit comes into play.
And yeah, and again, we work very closely with the state regarding that. We seem to be very effective. We had about 450 eggs last year. We actually had a roundup on geese. And so, you know, it's something you constantly have because they pre-populate for egg collection. But again, thank you.
Anyone else have any curiosities or questions?
How do you deal with the deer population in Lancaster, in the city?
It seems like you would think where there's more people would spook some certain wildlife, but it seems like things like coyotes and deer actually do very, very well in urban areas. They're like big dogs, just sit in the corner of your lawn and you can just walk by the sidewalk and they don't even move. So the deer get very comfortable. And then you have people who will feed them too, encourage them because they like seeing their deer. And you know, it's fine till you're the neighbor that doesn't want the deer there in your yard.
Lancaster closes a kind of an interesting challenge because they have a local city ordinance that prohibits the killing or harming of any animal in the city. So you know, as Commissioner Davis asked about the deer damage permits, people could potentially get them, even in the corporation like City Pickerington. I issue a nuisance deer permit for a landowner in the city limits. They've changed their ordinance to allow that to happen. Lancaster still has their ordinance kind of on the books that you're not allowed to kill an animal regardless. So at that point, technically, I can issue a permit, but they can't use it because of local laws. So until Lancaster kind of, you know, maybe gets that brought up at a city council meeting or something, we'll see about getting that looked at. But yes, deer in Lancaster are very prevalent. Our office is in the city and it's not unusual to see a dozen or more just grazing in the grass out back.
There's some rule against, I can't remember, a buddy of mine, I think he like had a beater or something for the deer down in Burn Township. And then he ended up putting like a bandana on one of the deer, something like that. And I think he got in some trouble for like having a pet.
I repeat to that particular, but yes, they totally encourage you to attempt to domesticate wild animals, whether it be a deer or a raccoon or a squirrel in that regard, so.
That is my.
His last name was Davis.
Do you see an increase in the raccoon population within the city?
I'm so proud of what he's named.
Yeah, I can't speak for in the city. You know, I handle quite a few of the complaints where a landowner says, I've got a raccoon that's climbing down my chimney or whatever. I've seen an increase in the number of complaints in the rural community for raccoons. And that's been kind of an ongoing thing for the last 20 or 30 years. And it's mostly driven by the fur market and fur trade internationally. And the prices of raccoon furs have dropped. No one's buying raccoon furs to make clothing. So no one's hunting or trapping raccoons. Back in the eighties and nineties, you know, when I was a teenager, I could go out and get $15 to $20 per raccoon. That was good money for a high school kid on a weekend to go out and take some raccoons. But now no one's doing it. So yeah, the raccoon population's very high. I don't know that it's any higher here in Lancaster, but I do hear the complaints from the agricultural community.
Thank you. And on behalf of the commission, welcome. Pleased to meet you. And I hope that if you see a way that we can be helpful in the future, I'm sure we'd want to do that.
Appreciate that.
All right, well, thank you all. Thank you all very much. At this time, the commission sets aside an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the commission. If you'd like to do so, please begin by stating your name, residential address. We do have a three-minute guideline, which we will show some flexibility on today given our reasonable-like schedule. It's true, we would like to address the commission at this time. Here in Nun, do we have any update on legal? All right, well, thank you. I was thinking I had something on my mind, but if I did, it's gone.
We're not going anywhere.
We'll get there, over time. Administration update, please.
All right, we can review A R P update from the 30.6 received. 22.2 has been appropriated, 10.9 extended and 4.6 encumbered or obligated. Next week's meeting, February the 7th, will be an evening meeting. It will be here in the hearing room, but it will be taking place at 7:00 P. M. Also heard from our friends at Lancaster Fairfield County Action Agency that they have received additional funding to help income-eligible COVID-impacted renters. This is specifically for a renter in Fairfield County with past due rent and utilities. They're going to begin working with households in eviction court. Actually, they started that last week and then processing general applications tomorrow. They are expecting a high demand for this assistance and that it could take several weeks to process those applications. You can find an application on their website or pick it up from their office. And again, it is limited to renters. COVID-impacted homeowners who need help should apply to the OFA's Save the Dream Program at savethedream.ohiohome.org. Over the past three years, they are sharing that they've helped over 1,500 households with $6 million in COVID-related rent, mortgage and utility assistance. We did receive some appreciation for our onsite E A P services from juvenile court. They shared that Jackie Krip, our counselor, is truly unique and talented and has been generous in designing programs that addresses the socio-emotional needs of their dedicated team. In addition to her one-on-one work with employees, she's also working with the court's behavioral health team to offer a series called the Empowerment Zone, Support for the Supporters. Also, so you heard about the SNAP. You know, that returning to normal is the phrase that they're using. But Medicaid redeterminations will restart as well. So that's going to be an ongoing evaluation. Case workers will begin the redetermination process in March for cases that are due in that time period. And if that case is reviewed in March, that's determined to not be eligible. Medicaid coverage would end for that period in April. It's a return to normal for Medicaid case processing that was suspended during the pandemic. Corey, you want to add anything to that?
I think you pretty well covered it, but yeah, just, you know, noting that both of those things are going to be taking place at about the same time. So it will be a very busy period for us there in March and April, getting those back to normal.
Return to normal.
Returning to normal.
And the Ohio Job and Family Services Directors Association has asked me to offer some customer service training to staff and also their leadership. So I'll be doing that via webinar and also at their annual conference, trying to provide these additional supports for the staff across the state that probably are going to be dealing with some very difficult customer service situations as people are not going to understand this change and trying to explain that, that there really isn't, there is no appeal option. This is just going back to how it was before. Active transportation plan and community survey, I think Bennett's going to throw that up there for us. But the existing active transportation plan that we have here was developed in '09 and last updated in '13. OSU City and Regional Planning Transportation Studio is working with key stakeholders here in the county, county staff and the Active Transportation Subcommittee and also CorpO, which is the central Ohio Rural Planning Organization. They're going to revisit this active transportation plan with the aim of addressing current and future countywide active transportation needs. It will be focusing on Lancaster, Buckeye Lake area and Violet Township. They're wanting public input via this survey. I took it yesterday, it was maybe a two-minute survey. But it really is very helpful to kind of guide and direct this process. It does close on February the 6th. Bennett did a great job of getting this out to a number of groups and stakeholders. So if you encounter somebody, encourage them to take that. And then it's also going to be follow-up stakeholder sessions. The first one is going to be virtual and then the second one will be in-person. And then lastly, they're going to come and present to the listeners in April on the findings of the plan and what they're recommending. So active transportation, you see right there, what is it? It's any form of transportation through human-powered means. So this is, we're talking about, you know, bike lanes, bike trails, walking paths, hiking, things of that nature. Governor's Executive Budget. So today at noon, Governor Mike Twine will give his annual State of the State address. He's going to use this address to announce many of his budget initiatives for the upcoming biennium. We have been advocating very heavily and strongly for the governor to be including workforce center budget needs there. C C I was expecting the actual language of the governor's executive budget to be released tomorrow. Dave, I think you had a little something to add to that.
So today at noon, we'll be able to watch, I wish you could. The governor will actually mention our workforce center. Talk about that a little bit in the State of the State.
Okay, moving on, highlights of resolutions. The review packet contains a list of administrative approvals. And we do have 21 resolutions for the voting meeting today. Couple resolutions of note, a resolution to enter into the 2023 Cooperative Agreement for a funding allocation to acquire agricultural easements through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program. We also have a resolution authorizing the approval for an amendment to a contract with B P L. This will be allowing B P L to do the design work for the B M V. Anything you want to add to that, John?
Just anxious to see what that outcome is going to look like for the B M V.
B M V at the Fairfield Center, I should specify that. Then we also have another change order for the contract with Sauer. And this is for the water treatment at the jail. And this is making those improvements more accessible to staff for ongoing maintenance and repairs. Perfect, all right. Then we also have a resolution on between the commissioners, the sheriff and the Logan Police Department for inmate housing. This is a renewal here for the year. We talked about last week, the approval for this C I D renewal, the five-year C I D renewal. So you'll find that on the meeting for you to all vote on today. And then lastly, we do have a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated. And this is for an unanticipated electrical replacement here in the historic courthouse. I think I've mentioned this before, but the electrical panel here is on its last legs and that's probably being kind. And we found out at the beginning of the year how much it was on its last legs. John?
Yeah, the panel dates from the 1960s. And the last time they actually manufactured the breakers was 1980s. They are now remanufactured every time a breaker is tripped. That is even getting very scarce now to order from the internet to search those codes.
We're finding them on eBay, correct?
We are finding them on eBay, right?
Just hear that.
It's not a good name. And just the outlook on the new panels will be, are, was they on order 42 weeks?
So one of the resolutions, Jonathan, on the permanent easement resolution, there's questions come up in the contract, if you will. I think that's a farm that comes from the state, I assume?
Yes.
And there's a sentence in the wheres is, it's not in the body of the operational portion of the contract, I guess is a way I'll say that. But there's a sentence in the wheres, and I'm not quoting directly or accurately, but it's something to the effect that, oh, we're opposed to.
I can quote for you if you like.
Well, go ahead because it's a true issue.
This is whereas the local sponsor, which would be the county and O D A have mutual interest in maintaining land and agricultural production. No issue with that. Part I have a concern about, and I spoke with Jonathan about it this morning, and preventing the conversion of agricultural lands to non-agricultural uses. So we're, you know, advocating for residential development, for commercial development. And to do those things, agricultural land needs to be turned into residential or commercial land. And so the idea of agreeing to this contract that says preventing the conversion of agricultural lands is, it just doesn't line up. So I spoke to Jonathan about this morning, asked if he could work with the state to either remove that entire whereas or at least that last sentence. And he said he could.
The executive director of the Office of Farmland Preservation indicates that she's willing to entertain into that language. She'd ask the council and I propose something for them to take through. As I indicated, Commissioner Fix, Dorothy Plant, as Director of O D A, left at the end of the year. So we're awaiting a Senate confirmation on a new director. So if what we present creates conflict within internal policy in O D A, it might take a little while for that new administration to slide in. But I would propose that our recommendation would lean towards, in accordance with our adopted land use plan, preparation of agricultural resources or in accordance with our adopted land use plan for voluntary protection of agricultural lands into the future. I don't think it aligns with the policy that you've already.
So I'm going to make a motion during our voting session to table this so that we can work through that. And if we get to a point where we're comfortable with it, we can bring it back up next week.
Yeah, and I think, Jonathan, I mean, I'm not going to say it with the right language choices or whatever, but I don't think the commission is opposed to farmland preservation. I really don't see it that way at all. But I do think that we would speak more in terms of balance than we would in terms of, you know, unfettered development or, you know, farmlands untouchable, you know? I just don't think we would use those extremes on either side of the equation. Would be somewhere more in the balance of things. But whatever y'all are able to sort out. I understand the concern that's been brought up and we are in a oh, I mean, probably more so than any other time I recall that the commission is certainly thinking about that prospective member of the workforce, that prospective employer, and what are the potential barriers for that person who wants to work and that person that wants to hire them? And some of the things we're thinking about on that continuum, which I know isn't in farmland preservation. I'm just trying to give you a broader flavor for what we're thinking about anyway. And that is, so okay, we want this person to get the skills and the training that they need to work. So you know, that's kind of where the workforce center comes in. Then I know Commissioner Fix is involved in a lot of conversations like, okay, well now where's where's this person that makes 40 grand a year going to live? And how's that budget working out? And then as you, I know you're aware, I'm kind of looking at the transit component of, okay, now they're, they got a chance to work, they got some skills, maybe there's a place for them to live, but now they got to get from, you know, where they live. And so we're thinking about those things prominently right now. And I think that's kind of a broader explanation, which may have occurred already in private, but of why there's some concern about a sentence that seems somewhat declarative, you know, on that kind of.
Yeah, I think we're, Amy and I have had several back and forths with them on the language. The state of Ohio continues to ignore the ability for, I believe, its counties to indemnify. Even though we've told them for 20 years, you can't put that in, they always try to put it in there. So we're always tweaking small pieces of it, again, trying to assure the best end result. For the commission to recognize, always 10 years ago now, we used to pursue federal money for farmland preservation along with the state money. Those cooperative agreements at the federal level put burdens upon the farming community that were not in favor. And we have backed away simply based on the fact it was listed upfront. So I am understanding of where you sit today. I think aligning with the adopted land use plan were prioritized within the county's adopted plan. Be that middle ground, and that aligns with where you go into the future with land use plan. with land use plan provisions.
Okay, moving on, budget review. So we gave Bart a little break, sent him on a cruise, so he's having a vacation and we've got Stacy here to share casino revenue update.
Yeah, we just got a notification this morning. You'll be happy to know that casino revenue is still coming in strong. It's, we'll receive in today or tomorrow $546,000.
And that's, on a calendar basis, that would be what we'd call a fourth quarter then?
Yeah, probably through December.
Right, so.
What was our budget for that?
It was 1.75.
Yes, we still estimate that, but we did receive 2.3 last year.
Right, so 1.75 per year, right?
Yep.
And we just got, how much in?
Half a million.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and Commissioner, if I might, on that point, there is a history, small, not a lot of history, but there's some history on that, casino revenue. And it certainly changed during the pandemic, specifically when we went, when we got zeroed out.
It's a change.
When they were closed and then they reopened, there was apparently quite a rush to get in there and that, that, and, you know, I don't want to make judgments about clientele, but the federal spending on many levels is probably showing up still in casinos. And then, so a couple of things we're thinking about in that revenue stream is, in theory, at some point, the federal government doesn't print as many trillions that they don't have as they used to, maybe. And then the other issue that we're thinking about is the, just kind of a return to normalcy, which would be the 1.75, the 1.8, the 1.9, you know, pretty much right in there.
Yeah, and you would also think that the new allowance for sports gambling, most of that to be done online, I would think, will have some impact at the casino level.
I, I do think there's going to be some cannibalization of the income dedicated to gambling in that regard. I'm going to give Dr. Brown an opportunity to, I mean, I know there's our estimate, there's your estimate right now, those are the same estimate, but still.
So we'll continue to monitor that and make adjustments every quarter. Last year, when we made adjustments, we came to a full general fund, about 107% of actual, which is about the sweet spot, about where it should be. So if it were a time in which the carryover cash were not at the level it is now and you needed to have additional estimated receipts in order to make appropriations, then those quarterly adjustments would allow for those additional appropriations to be closer to actual.
Please continue if there's more. I can't remember, where did we get the, February number? Did we get that prior to last meeting or between last meeting and this meeting?
First day was tough.
Yeah, I can't remember when that came in.
Part talked about.
Yeah, all right, so we know that's looking.
Oh, you're talking about sales tax.
Yeah, better than expected for two out of the first three months of the quarter on that. And then, Dr. Brown, while we have you, do you have any news or information that you want to share?
I have a lot of news, but I think what you're saying is little baby Ella, because you're smiling so big, yes, baby Ella has arrived, grandchild number four, and she looks just like Mia, only just a little bit lighter and a little bit longer. They look exactly alike. Mia keeps telling me that I'm not allowed to take Ella home. She said, you're not allowed to take her home. Not yet, she's just a few days old.
Well, congratulations to you.
Brings joy, brings joy.
Your joining in the excitement.
Wonderful joy.
If you've met my two boys, you know it might be quite some time before I get the pleasure.
I can't wait to tell them.
My mom is particularly, my mom is particularly happy because it's her namesake. My mom is my chella and this is Ella, so, very sweet.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Please continue.
Okay, recognition. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the Geographical Information Systems Team for going the extra mile with the implementation of the Public Safety Case Management and 911 program. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Amy Brown Thompson for her quick response, her language about the county's inability to agree to certain indemnification clauses. This proactive approach with RFPs will help save time in the future. And lastly, County Auditor Dr. Brown shared appreciation from Jay Matlin, a local Realtor. Jay said, thank you for pulling this data together for me, I really appreciate it. What great customer service and a quick response. This is not something you see with other counties, so bravo to you, Noel Saunders. And he also thanked Rachel Elsie for getting him connected to the right person. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Can I add a couple?
Sure.
I wanted to say thank you to Bennett for pulling together a number of different recycling bins for us. We're clearing out the mezzanine in the second floor on the east side of the hallway and there's just a lot of, obviously duplicate records there and quite a lot. And so we're spending a lot of effort in doing that, so thanks for pulling that together and making that job a little bit easier. And earlier you mentioned from Juvenile Court, the approach they're taking with the EAP. I'd like to add to that, that we as well have some EAP connections and Jackie Tripp has been very helpful. And if anybody else wants to participate in the stress management and change management strategies, we'll make sure we have those dates out to everybody in case they would like to participate either virtually or some other way, because there are topics that might be of interest to any department. She's been very, very helpful and I put a summary of that in the January 28 memo as well, but just wanted to say thank you since Ani had mentioned the thank you from Juvenile Court.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Rochelle, please.
Okay, on some calendar review, on a calendar review item, the Walnut Township Special Meeting at the Pleasantville Community Center is this Wednesday, the first, at seven o'clock. We had a resident that called and we have informed that resident, as we will, and the others that called, that the commissioner's intention is to be there if they are able. On other calendar review items, we have the Regional Planning Commission meeting, February 7th, at 5:30 at the Fairfield County Records Center. The Commissioners Review and Regular Meeting next Tuesday at seven o'clock here, as Ms. Cordell announced earlier, the BU Next Project-Based Learning Module at Burn Union Local Schools to Engage Students to Conceptualize District Building Presentation Program. That is something new on the calendar, that is February 9th at six o'clock. The Transit Event on February 10th from 11 to 1. The Transit Loop Hub is West Wheeling Street, behind the Government Service Buildings, and there are pre-loop bus rights to support transit on that day. Lancaster State of the City Address, February 23rd, the breakfast begins at 7:30 and then is the Crossroads Event Center on Fair Avenue.
All right, take a breath for a minute and let's touch base on a couple of those issues. One, Amy, if you know, Walnut Township is hosting this thing Wednesday night, Dale Arnold or somebody's going to be there or something. Did they, is that a noticed public meeting by the Walnut Township Board of Trustees?
It's my understanding it is, because I believe I got the, they send, they typically send us special meeting notices and they send that to us.
And so then the question I just want to get clarity on, because that, let's say that is a publicly noticed meeting, two or more of the commissioners being in attendance at that meeting is a, is a non-issue, so to speak.
Correct, actually, I feel a similar question with Liberty. I think you guys can go, as long as you're not discussing, it's information gathering, you're not, you know, it's very clear, there's no deliberating. If you're going to get information, that's completely fine.
So, so there are, you, I just don't want to fence with you on your language or whatever, but you're intimiting that there are some limitations on us because it's not our meeting?
Well, it's not your meeting, but I would just, I wouldn't turn it into your meeting, I guess. I mean, if you're going there to listen and hear what's going on, there's no provision with multiple members going, because you're right, typically you'd have a quorum if you had more than two.
So he's laughing because he thinks she just said, Steve, don't be Steve Wednesday night.
We will still, we will still plan to notice it and include it in the schedule.
All right, that was one question. The other thing is, I just wanted to mention, on that Transit Event on the 10th, I'm, I'm going to participate in that and I think Ani was planning to do that as well and folks are certainly welcome to join us in that if you would like. And then Rochelle, I apologize, I think I cut you off, wanted to go on that.
Well, I got, so Rochelle, if you could put on my calendar, the BU Next Event, third one.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item was for the United Way of Fairfield County Annual Meeting and Award宴 with Andre Cordell will be attending, that is February 28th at the Olive Dale Senior Center. Any others want to attend, I will speak P for you also.
Yeah, and Ani and I touched base on that this morning and of course, I know most of us in one form or another have tried to show our support for United Way. They're having their, you know, annual meeting at a time when we normally have our meetings. I just think we got to roll with that. I mean, the time and place of our meetings isn't a moving target. You know when we're going to meet. And if it turns out that folks double up on that, then that's, you know, that's the way it goes. But I just don't want to get into a situation where we're bouncing our schedule around because, you know, and again, huge support for United Way. So I have more to say on that later, but I just don't, I don't want to start bouncing our schedule around because other people aren't looking at it.
Totally agree, and I'll be in Key West then.
So I plan on attending the United Way and being here on time at nine o'clock.
Well, you are quite the guy.
So the other thing, count me for David the city.
Yeah, I think you've already got me on that, Rochelle, but if not, if you could.
Thank you.
I'll be attending the State of the City as well.
Are you ready to correspondence?
Please.
TFLP's Holiday Waste District, December 31st, 2022 Financial Statement Letter Regarding Fourth Quarter Report, an email from Clinton Davis, Executive Director for Lancaster Field for Community Action Agency, dated January 24th, subject COVID-related Rent Utilities Assistance Program, an email from AMH, Teen Flyer from Mental Health America of Ohio, an email from Rachel Elsie, Auditor's Office Communication Officer, dated January 25th, subject Auditor Strategic Plan Update, January 2023. A county resident called about this one to thank the commissioners for their support, and that is the Fairfield County Educational Service Center celebrates renovated space. That was in the Lancaster Eagle Gazette on January 26th, and Barbara Renaud just wanted the commissioners to know how thankful she was that the, that the county actually supports items like that. Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, 2022, itemized account of fees report, report from Fairfield County Sheriff, dated January 27th, 2022 Law Enforcement Trust Fund Report Recap, you've seen this, this is a recap of it. Presentation from Act Centurion and the Ohio Chamber of Commerce Blueprint for Ohio's Economic Future. A thank you note from Heather O'Keefe, the Protective Services Team at Job and Family Services, to Andrea Cordell and staff for support and donations for the holiday donation drive. A letter to commissioners from county resident, from a county resident requesting their attendance at the Walnut Township February 1st Special Meeting, that's the meeting we were just talking about. One Columbus Middle Higher Regional Planning Commission drafts for Fairfield County's Competitive Advantage Projects. Bala Western Road Improvements, East Side Industrial Connector, Far East Freeway, I-70 to US 33 Connector and Southeast US 33 Corridor. A memo from County Auditor Dr. Carrie Brown, dated January 28th, subjects legal descriptions of property, dog registration deadline, earned income tax credit awareness day, strategic plan update, support for employees and the February map of the month availability. A press release from Burn Union Local Schools, dated November 8th, innovative program at Burn Union challenges students to define next Burn Union School building. Comes also from the calendar. Flyer, Ohio Loves Transit Event, Free Fares on Loop Buses on February 10th. That is also what we discussed in the calendar items. Fairfield County Active Transportation Planning Committee Survey, and I believe that's it.
All right, well, thank you very much. Under Old Business, just a couple of items I want to touch on. Was happy to be at the Workforce Center, I think it was last Thursday, was that Mode? Is Mode last Thursday? Last Thursday, and Mode, Mid-Ohio Development Exchange Coalition, if you will, of economic development types and people interested in proper planning for the development that we're expecting in the near horizon. Really nice presentation at that meeting by the President of the Ohio Chamber of Commerce, Steve Stivers, on some research that they've done regarding a number of different areas where Ohio could maybe be doing better relative to other states and some things. So just a good meeting, really well received, a lot of folks hung around for a while to learn more about the Workforce Center and what was going on there, so I felt really good about that. The other thing I wanted to mention is we're continuing the administrative process with RLS on transit, awaiting a contract proposal on that, and really seeing a lot of different concepts that might fit into that analysis. There's a share mobility group that, that we're needing to learn more about. We're seeing some things about different rideshare operators, like say, for example, Uber or Lyft, who have stackable solutions and potential bolt-on solutions that, that can be brought to bear in, in public transit schemes. We're not pursuing those avenues independently, but we would like, all things considered, as we look to go through this process with RLS. Commissioner Levesey on Old Business.
Well, I like you attending that Mode meeting and Commissioner Davis presented and I thought he did the perfect job, Steve Stivers, it was a nice event. And what's amazing about that, we have folks from all over central Ohio there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fix on Old Business.
So last Tuesday, was able to attend the kickoff meeting for the Economic Development Strategic Plan and Land Use Plan Update and felt like it was a really good room, a lot of really smart people, a lot of different perspectives brought to the table. And it feels like our consultant has done a nice job of reaching out to stakeholders to gather information, so I'm looking forward to the completion of that plan late in summer.
All right, thank you, sir. Ani Cordell.
Jail population last week, January 24th, it was 239 with 22 of those being contracted placements. The sheriff reports today, 231 with 18 of those being contracted placements, and he is still continuing to reach out to the Meggs County Sheriff to learn more about his placement situation.
Thank you. Under New Business, I just wanted to share some background that I learned over the weekend. Was thrilled to be able to be at the Polar Plunge on Sunday, incredibly well-attended event, hundreds, and learned a little bit about the history of that, because I found myself curious, why, why have I heard about this last couple of years? I don't remember hearing about it 10 years ago or something. Apparently, it's been going on for a long time. Other charities might have been the beneficiary of the event prior to United Way becoming the beneficiary of the event. And United Way has done something that the owner of the Buckeye Lake Winery, Dave, his name's Tracy.
Dick, Dick, Mom.
Yeah, something like that.
Tracy.
Yeah. But anyway, he was telling me, as I was talking to him on Sunday, that prior charitable recipients didn't. recipients didn't put the staff on the ground and the support system around that event that United Way does. And he was speaking very highly of that, because he said, like, historically, they might have to do it all. And, and the event wasn't nearly as well-attended and participated in as it is now. But just to give you an example, I was, I was learning over the weekend, last year, I think 132 people jumped into the freezing water. This year, they had over 180 pre-registants, and then another 20 or 25 that, that came and registered that day for the job. The Speaker of the House came, came to the event. Tracy treated us all like, you know, I don't know, some kind of royalty or something. I mean, he was, he was breaking barrels of stuff that had been saved for a special occasion and, you know, it was a really neat event. Probably one of the coolest things is, and I have pictures of this that really don't do it justice or whatever, but if you could have seen Jeff Porter pre-jump, I think in his words, he would be described as a hot mess. And then to see him post-jump with just all the stress gone, and he's still alive, and everything's good. But I, I just thought it was a really neat event. I know some other folks who were, who were there, if you want to comment on that. Oh, yeah, we, we're just really grateful. You know, I'm wrapping up my year as President of United Way, and the Vice President and I made a commitment at the beginning of the year that we were going to jump. And ultimately, we had, you know, Jeff LaRae, the sheriff, President of Park National Bank, all these different folks who came out to support. Recorder McKenzie was there, everybody came. And it's just a great event for our community, I think, in proverbial, break the ice on a new year. I mean, we just came out and people got to talk, and it was a good time. Commissioner Levesey on New Business?
I don't have much to add to that, but you know, I, I would have gone had Steve Davis jumped.
I understand. Were you there last year?
I, I, you know, so the, so the Polar Plunge, actually, at my business, it goes way back, back in the 70s, we had.
Is that right?
So I've been there, done that, and I don't want to do it anymore.
Mr. Fix on New Business? All right, any other issue or item that anybody'd like to bring to the attention of the Commissioner at this time, Dr. Brown?
Just highlight from my strategic plan from the office, on two of the newest pages relating to an out-of-glance statistics and the themes and outline. And I'll provide this to you in case you don't have time to, like, look through the entire plan. Just a couple of highlights for that. One of the unique statistics were that 10,000 legal descriptions are checked annually. That's about one every 20 minutes, and those are done the same day service. I just wanted to mention that because it's not the same kind of situation that you might find in another county. Just wanted to highlight that a bit. We do have the Stonewall Cemetery maps, which are already being requested. I brought a few of those along as well. The earned income tax credit, we did a little announcement with the staff relating to the earned income tax credit, just as part of Awareness Day for that, not to give advice about taxes, but just to provide the awareness. A lot of folks don't know that that's, you know, up to moderate income. It's $59,000, about $28 an hour. So a lot of people fall underneath that particular category for that credit. So we're just bringing a little awareness to that. Today is the deadline for dog registrations. We will do the one-day grace period, if that is acceptable with the Commissioners as well.
I believe it is. Good. Any other issue or item that anybody'd like to bring to the attention of the Commissioner at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our voting pattern. If you would please rise if you're able to join us in the pleasure of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
Thank you. Rochelle, do you have any announcements?
No new announcements.
For the minutes from January 24, 1423.
So moved.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes past 3:0. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution 2023-1.31.a. Resolution to authorize the President of the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners to sign the petition for the downtown special improvement district renewal.
There are Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, and D.
Second. Discussion.
Touchdowns?
Yeah, things I couldn't say, but.
Me too.
Further discussion? Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Motion's passed 3:0. From Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution 2023-1.31.e. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, Fairfield County Common Pleas Court, Common Pleas County Probation Fund, 2365.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2023-1.31.f. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, EMA funds.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-1.31.g. A resolution to approve an agreement between Fairfield County and TTL Engineering Incorporated.
Fairfield County Engineer, I move items G, H, I, J, and K.
Second. Discussion. Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3:0. For the Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2023-1.31.l. A resolution authorizing the approval for Amendment Number Two to a contract between VPL Architects Incorporated and the Fairfield County Commissioners.
The Fairfield County Facilities, I move items L and M.
Second. Discussion. Further discussion? Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Motion's passed 3:0. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-1.31.n. A resolution regarding a purchase of service contract between Forensic Fluids Laboratories Incorporated and Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023-1.31.o. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Chrysler Voyager LX for mobility works for the use of transportation of the elderly to and from appointments and to move those who are facing convictions.
Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items O and P.
Second. Discussion.
Purchase of the van, this was one of our earlier ARP appropriations. It's just taking them a while, taking them a while to find the van to be able to purchase it.
Further discussion? I'll just mention, I, Ani and I had this discussion this morning without necessarily regard to particular ARP grant recipients, but I'm encouraged, Mr. Fix, to have a Plan B, to be able to go operational with, if in the event one recipient or another gets to a point where we're certain that they're going to have trouble with compliance issues or timeline issues, I would just want us to be agile and ready to respond quickly to that news or situation. Further discussion? Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3:0. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2023-1.31.q. A resolution authorizing the approval of an update to the original contract with Tyler Tech and the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office.
Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items Q, R, and S.
Second. Discussion.
As the first one there, the approval of an update to that contract with Tyler Tech, this is also an ARP-funded project that we are seeing some increasing expenses related to. So as we look at Plan Bs, we are also allowing that we could be increased costs among numerous projects.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3:0. For Fairfield County Soil and Water, Resolution 2023-1.31.t. An administrative approval to enter into the 2023 Cooperative Agreement for Funding Allocation to Acquire Agricultural Easements through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for Fairfield County, Ohio.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this item?
Hold on, second that motion. Discussion.
As discussed in our review meeting, there's a sentence in the agreement that is troubling. And so we're working with our Soil and Water Conservation District to have them work with the state to find language that's more amenable. We hope that can be brought back next week.
Further discussion? Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
The motion is to table the item 2023-1.31.t. On payment bills, Resolution 2023-1.31.u. A resolution authorizing the approval of payments of the vouchers without appropriate carryover purchase orders and the cash disbursement for all departments that are approved by the Commissioners.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for February 7th at seven o'clock in this room.
So we schedule for the Commissioners this morning here in just a moment or so. We'll probably need a recess. We have an executive session on pending litigation before we, and then after that, we'll probably just adjourn. I'm not aware of any other new business or commission always reserves right to take up any issue we deem appropriate prior to adjournment. So again, say it won't happen, but it's not planned to at this point. So that's kind of our thing, is to do that executive session and then adjourn probably. Prior to that motion being made, going to executive session, I want to again ask if there's any other issue or item that anybody'd like to bring to the attention of the Commissioner at this time? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to go into executive session in five minutes. My purposes are discussing ending litigation in that session. Like to have Commissioners, clerk, County Administrator, Deputy County Administrator, representatives from the Prosecutor's Office, and I'm going to add outside of council, even though I don't think they're physically on the year, but I think they should be the recipients of the results of that executive session discussion.
Second.
Got a motion, it's the second.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey? Motion passes 3:0.
Which will be the executive session?